This is regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona on April 15th, 2014, held at 16:00 AM at the Council's Chivers Building. City Clerks, take the roll. Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Elinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Yarson?
Here.
Councilmember Howdy?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Crenshaw is asking, Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, the next item is the pledge of allegiance. Um, Mr. Nessa, we want to know if he is eligible?
I expect him. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of our rights and freedoms, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And thank you for many years of service to our country.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the Mayor, the City Council, and or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, or deliberate or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noted as legal action. Mr. Crenshaw?
Mayor, just two things. We had the Nicholson Marathon this last weekend. Been very successful. A lot of positive feedback from the participants. We had 560 participants and it continues to grow. Also, last week, our Fire Department and Police Department participated in the high school education program called Every Fifteen Minutes. And that's a program where they staged a fatal car accident where the driver of the vehicle was intoxicated. And it's a very moving experience for the students and families involved and hopefully sends a message during calm and graduation night not to drink and drive. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Council?
Yes, I attended the St. Daniel Byrne Nicholson Memorial Run Saturday. As Mr. Crenshaw said, it was very successful. We had a number of people from out of town, a number of people from out of state. I did talk to one girl from New Jersey. We came here just to run the numbers. And we had a 10-year-old from the half marathon from Apache Junction and was quite impressed with it. People just love the organization. And, you know, even though it's a team effort, there's two people who really worked very hard to organize this. And it's Ryan Bigelow and Lynn Nicholson. They really put a lot of effort and it's just a great event for Cottonwood. Just another thing that puts us on the map. And I did the answering part. And then when I was done, I went over to the Uofc Fire Training Center. They were putting the cadets through some training when they're going into building. I was really impressed with the quality of training they have over there. Just gave me another reason to say that we need to keep the facility open over here because it does train a lot of our firefighters and it's just really well-run.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmembers? Mr. Ilinski, I saw you, I think I saw you somewhere at the race also?
I was there, yeah, I was there. My wife and daughter, we ran it.
How did you carry the baby?
In a stroller.
Oh, okay, got it.
With a secret electric motor in there that dragged me through the finish line.
All right. You had an advantage, in other words.
Yeah, that's right. I wanted to mention that the Historic Preservation Commission has landmarked two buildings in Old Town and I chair the commission, so I'm proud of that. We landmarked the Civic Center first and then we landmarked the old jail on behalf of the city, so we're making progress. And our goal is to reach out now to different community members who have historic homes and would like to landmark them.
And I just signed those papers yesterday, I think, and I asked for a copy of them because I just thought it would be neat to have that information. So Matt scanned them and if you'd like a copy, you can just ask Matt to send it to you. He can send it to you electronically. But I think it's interesting just to read, you know, the documentation on that. Mr. Jesse, how about Ride for Wife?
All right, let's see. We're now to about 10 members on the team, a few City of Cottonwood employees, other people, some business owners and other community members. We did, let's see, about 20, I want to say just about 22 miles this weekend in train. Rode almost every day last week, so we're gaining steam. We've been invited to ride in a 44-mile ride in Phoenix in about two weeks, so we're going to go down and see what it's really like down there in the Valley of the Sun. But it's a great time, if anybody wants to join in, please, please do so. All welcome, all experience levels are welcome. Or if you want to donate, that's fine too, that doesn't hurt a bit. We're on Facebook, the Facebook page is called Ride for Wife. And I hope you take a look and give it a like and we'll keep growing. I try to keep, maintain the group throughout the year and try and bring in some more cycling events to the area and just make it as good as it can be.
Any other councilmembers? Team Center, do we have a report from our City Clerk?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Team Center?
Happy to report, happy to report that at our prize bingo fundraising event we held this weekend, Saturday, at the Moose Lodge from 11 to 5, we made $968.
Wow.
Every penny counts.
It does.
And the building is getting closer to completion with the interior renovation and we're excited about that, so hopefully we'll be open in a couple more months.
Great, very exciting. Okay, I attended the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition and they were talking about the feasibility of getting a housing authority in the Verde Valley, and I guess it would be all of Yavapai County. And this would help people who are eligible for what they call Section 8 and you can actually, you know, Cottonwood has quite a few housing developments with subsidy, but this would enable people to rent any home and be able to take their subsidy with them wherever they are within the county. So where that's going, I'm not sure, but hopefully something will come of that. On April 2nd, I attended the public presentation of the Riverfront Reclamation Plant and there were various stations that allowed, that showed the extra steps that we're taking to prevent flooding, how the plan would remove pharmaceuticals, and the design builder was there to speak to the public. So that was very interesting and I actually, it reminded me of, you know, where we've been with the plant and where we're going. On Thursday, I attended the Kids at Hope Steering Committee meeting and we are quickly moving along and looking at what other organizations and people within our community should be included to make us not just a Kids at Hope school, but a Kids at Hope community. And Council will remember that Kids at Hope believes that every child has the ability to be successful with no exceptions. We had a ribbon cutting at John's Design Center and if Council will remember, the children came and spoke to us and it was interesting to know, was it, was it you that talked about the Verde River?
Yeah, and they got that in there.
Have you seen it?
Yeah.
There's a beautiful, very prominent Verde River in the design. Yeah, they did a great job and the kids were doing the zumba and they were dancing and it was, it was a lot of fun. On April 4th, I hosted a coffee talk at Gerona and we had about probably eight or 10 people that came and we visited with and the City Manager was there and Richard Faust. April 7th, we had our final SciTech wrap-up and we'll meet again in June to start planning for the Verde Valley SciTech 2015 Festival. And on April 7th, Councilmember Garrison and I attended the open house for the collaborative project between Yavapai College and the City of Cottonwood and we flipped the switch to send reclaimed water to the new Southwest Wine Center's grapevine fields. And I would like to just take this opportunity to sincerely thank our staff, the City Manager and our staff, and they who were so diligent to see this project through fruition because we all know that every drop counts and reusing water is a supply for the future. Yesterday, Morgan Scott and I met with ADOT's District Engineer Alvin Stump and Steve Ayers and Jane Whitmire of Camp Verde to discuss a multi-use bicycle and pedestrian trail along Highway 260. And Steve Ayers invited me over to talk about this and we're talking about, you know, pedestrians but bicycles too. And we would love to have a connection between Camp Verde and Cottonwood for bicycles. As we looked at, Morgan will make a report on this to the City Manager and to the, he'll make it to the Council, but, you know, they're not thinking that there'll be enough funds to make a bike trail along 260, but we were looking at the possibilities of some connection points and then, is it Old 279 that we might be able to connect there? So it's something that we can continue to discuss and I'm sure our Council would like to be part of that. So stay tuned for more collaboration on that idea. And just to let everybody know, the stewards of public lands will celebrate our 10th anniversary in April and in 10 years, we've covered more than 6,000 acres in the Verde Valley at least once. A few, a couple places, at Cherry and Jaeger Canyon, we've been there. But we've covered 6,000 acres once and maintained upwards of 30,000 acres by going over and over and we've pulled 374 tons of garbage off public lands. So that, you know, the first five years, we pulled a dumpster out of, a 40-yard dumpster out of the forest just about every month, but now we've done, Supervisor Chip Davis had done a little program. He'd authorized us $5,000, but we found it only took about $1,000 a year to maintain and we just don't see the dumping on public lands that we did 10 years ago. So we think the program's been successful and we'll probably be meeting with the City Manager to talk a little bit about how Cottonwood can help us maintain. We figure it takes about $300 a year, about $1,000 in three years to let us dump for the small groups that go around and pick up. So we'll be meeting with him about that. And that's all I have to report for this week. Thank you very much. So proclamations. Tonight, we have Dr. Bob Richards here with us to receive this proclamation and he's on the Cottonwood Bicycle Committee. It's the BAC Bicycle Advisory Committee that works very closely with our staff on bicycle issues. So the proclamation says, "Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas today, Americans are turning to the bicycle more than ever before as a means of becoming a part of the solution in our nation's quest to better our citizens' health, improve our environmental quality, and promote our energy independence. And to overwhelmingly support improving our quality of life and providing quality recreational opportunities for our families and our visitors. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists and its chapters have declared May as Bike Month since 1956. And whereas the City of Cottonwood Bicycle Advisory Committee, our Valley's chapter of the League, and independent cyclists throughout Arizona are calling for greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety and an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and to increase the enjoyment for all. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Bicycle Awareness Month and the week of May 12th through 16th to be Bike to Work Week throughout all of Cottonwood and urge all residents, schools, city departments, and civic groups to support bicycling and for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists to work together to share our streets, roads, and trails. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the Seal of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, this 15th day of April 2014." I would just like to share with you all some of the bike events that will be coming up in May and hope that everyone who can participate will. So on May 3rd, we're having the Mayor's Ride, that's the Mayor, and the Council comes too, starting at Garrison Park at 9:00 AM. And I want you all to know that they're not going to let me just ride downhill this time. For years, we've had, we started at Viejo Park and we rode down the hill. This time, we're going to go around, we have a little route picked out and the Bicycle Committee picked it out, so everybody come and help me make it through the day. And May 3rd, we'll have the Bike Rodeo afterwards, after the Mayor's Ride at Garrison Park at 11:00 AM, so bring your children. I think they can get a helmet and can get some bicycle training, so it's just a big community affair. And we want all the kiddies to come and join us. May 16th, oh, and having this on May 3rd on the Saturday, the Mayor's Ride instead of Friday, that's hoping to get more families and children involved too?
When does it start? What time?
9:00 AM at Garrison Park. And May 16th through 18th is the Bike MS Ride, as Mr. Dowling said, Ride the Vortex and don't forget to register for Ride for Wife. And May 21st is the Ride of Silence leaving Riverfront Park at 5:00 PM. So Dr. Richards, would you please come up and receive the proclamation? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it and the City Council for their support of bicycling and our wonderful,
Thank you very much. Which reminds me, I have to get a note from my husband to get my bike out and test it off. I have two weeks to practice. I always say I'm going to do it sooner, but you know how life is. And I think Councilman Garrison rides the bike, don't you?
Rode last year, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll see you there too. Okay. Awards, the most fun part of being a councilmember. So the first award is Employee of the Quarter and this is for the first quarter of 2014 and Debbie Bright-Right, okay Debbie, help.
Bright Rights.
Bright Rights. I've practiced and practiced that, but if I don't say it for a few weeks, I forget again. Bright Rights is going to receive an award and we have her supervise, are you, no, you're her supervisor.
I have lots.
Okay. So Roger Biggs will explain why she's receiving this award.
Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. Debbie's enthusiasm, her commitment to this organization, willingness to take on any project added to her and invariably knock it out of the park, including the recent SciTech Festival. Her and her crew did an outstanding job of that. I think that makes this award truly fitting and well-deserved honor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so do you have any words of wisdom?
I hope that my enthusiasm towards this will reach out to members of the public and the children that we do all the events with and everything to get them interested in wastewater. Obviously, everybody knows I'm passionate about it, so.
She knows more, she knows more about those little bugs than any human being, not to, right?
I like to be very passionate about it, so if I could involve people in it, then it just helps us out in the end, so.
Well, I know that you were a huge part of helping Rudy with the SciTech Festival and you did a lot for that and we had it, you hosted it at your, at your plant.
I know, somebody doesn't like it, then I call it my plant.
Right. And then, pretty soon in a few weeks, we're going to be having the Water Literacy for Kindergarten Program starting and I always like to remind everyone that the kindergartners get the biggest kick out of calling her the Queen of Pooh.
I think I'm going to get a T-shirt like that, so I could just wear it for that whole week when we do that.
That would be great, but she does a lot of educational stuff and really enjoys. I think you help, don't you help with the Wet Festival?
I help with the Wet Festival. Also, Linda Zanoli's program in CRD, I believe.
Okay.
That's going to actually be in May too. She does the eighth graders or the fourth graders that come over from Cottonwood Middle School and do a water-wise sort of thing at the wastewater plant too.
Right. And we'd like to remind everybody that has children to remind them that these are some really great careers and we, we need people to be interested in these careers and there will be opportunities for them in the future.
There will be.
All right, so we have something for you tonight. If you would like to come up and receive it. So we have this beautiful little pot for your wall. You can be so proud of yourself. I bet you there's not a mayor in the 91 cities and towns that have more pictures of their community than I do.
The camera will.
I have that from my grandmother, she was like that. And then you also were not that yet. Get a little check to take it all the way.
Thank you.
Tonight, we will also be hearing from someone who is winning a safety award. So it's our quarterly safety award and we have Barbara Liskowski. And I hope I said that right. All right, and she is the head lifeguard. And we have Hezekiah Allen here to tell us why she's winning this award.
Madam Mayor, Council, it's our pleasure that we recommended Barbara Liskowski for this award. Her job entails safety on a day-in, a day-out basis, but the activities that took her above and beyond that scope took place a couple of weeks ago where the local school district had brought numerous amounts of special needs children to the recreation facility. And unbeknownst to us, that same day at 9 o'clock, Barbie Urin called and said, "We have the State Superintendent John Hupenthal here along with his group and they want to come do a walk-through." Afterwards, we received an email that said, "Secondly, thanks to the outstanding staff that had no notice, gave a warm Cottonwood welcome to our State Superintendent and Public Instruction, John Hupenthal. I called around 9:00 saying that we would be there in 10 minutes and we need to get him in and out in a very tight schedule." She mentions Barbara in that, saying that she did an outstanding job carrying from the needs of these special interest groups, so we made, we thought it imperative to put her in for this award.
All right, very well deserved. Any comments?
Always just part of my job, though, but thank you very much for the recognition.
You're welcome. So we have a little something for you also?
I can attest to the fact that she's there early every morning and busy.
Well, since you can attest, how would you like to?
I would be honored to.
Help me with this. Now, we're not going to take any photos of this. Thank you.
Too much fun in this time.
She just requested that and we want to respect that. So we want to give you this pot to put on your wall and hopefully you will enjoy seeing the accomplishments when you look at it. And Mr. Pratt has a little something extra.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next presentation is the Cottonwood Culture Challenge and I think we have Casey Rooney with us tonight to help us learn about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm honored to be here tonight. Councilman Pratt talked about the Nicholson Marathon putting us on the map. Well, I've got another event that I think is also going to help put us on the map along with all the other things that we do in our great community. And I've got with me today Juliana Bruci, who is the organizer, one of the organizers of this event. And I want to tell you a little bit about how I found out about this event. I was at the Rural Development, the event first of all is called the Culture Challenge. And I was down at an event in Phoenix. It was the Rural Development Conference that Kimber Lanning puts on. A lot of us know Kimber, a very involved person in our own community and well-respected throughout the state. After the conference ended the first night, she said, my wife was with me, she said, "Come on down, we're going to go to the Wallace and Ladmo Theater." Do any of you remember Wallace and Ladmo?
Look at all the hands up.
Wallace and Ladmo were there that night. They have a theater down in downtown Phoenix. And so we went down with Kimber and a few other people from the conference and Kimber introduced me to a gentleman, his name's Marshall Shore. Marshall Shore is an arts and culture historian and he's called the Hip Historian. He's just a real interesting guy. So I was talking to Marshall, like I talk to a lot of people that I meet on the street or just anywhere.
Casey knows no strangers.
Exactly. I told Marshall, I said, "Marshall, Hip Historian, you need to come up to Cottonwood and see what's happening." He said, "Yeah, I'll come up one of these days." And I hadn't heard from him and hadn't heard from him for a long time. Then he called me up one day. He says, "I've got some people from an organization called Arizona Culture that I want to introduce you to. I want to come up, want to bring them with, with me and introduce ourselves to you and I have an idea for you." So he came up along with Juliana and Warren Chu and they explained the Culture Challenge to me. And Juliana's going to come up and explain in a little bit more detail, but they came up. But they came up, they explained it to me and I said, "This is like the coolest thing that I've ever heard of." And they explained it and what, what happened was that Juliana called me later after they left and she said, "We're going for a Arizona Commission for the Arts grant." So she whipped out the grant before you could snap your fingers. And next thing you know, we're getting this grant from the Arizona Commission on the Arts. And I think it's really an honor for us as a community to get this grant. They've, since then, they've asked me to go down and be a panelist for the next round of grants. So another way that we're putting the community on the map. So it was kinda interesting, Wallace and Ladmo, I didn't know who they were, because I, I'm not from here originally, but they're a big deal. And with that said, I want to bring up Juliana to explain what this is all about, so you get a better idea.
Thank you, Casey. First of all, I'll say a little bit more about the grant, because it actually was, I feel like, a really big deal. And Cottonwood was one of only 11 communities that was selected as a recipient. And it was, it was out of some additional funding that the Arizona Commission on the Arts had, out of about a million dollars. So $10,000 of that was the largest amount that you could get. And there were several communities that got less than that. We got the maximum amount, so I think that's a real positive thing. What the Culture Challenge is designed to do is to create a cultural tourism experience for 200 contestants that we will bring from Phoenix or Tucson, other surrounding areas. We are open to local contestants as well, but we do think that the focus should be on the Phoenix area. Out of that grant, about $5,000 of the $10,000 is going to be used to create a marketing video for the city of Cottonwood. And so with that said, 10 of the 200 contestants will be wearing GoPros. We have three additional roving videographers and we have a drone. So the idea is to capture reality sort of footage that is more action-like, more kind of like The Amazing Race, for those of you who are familiar with that sort of thing. Only it has probably more of an arts and culture slant to it, because that is, you know, that's how we got the grant, was through arts and culture. So William Eaton, who is the head of Old Town Center for the Arts, is who the grant was written through. The stipulations of the grant were that you have a non-art's partner and an arts partner. William's the arts partner and the city of Cottonwood's economic development is the non-art's partner. And because we also involved Local First, Arizona, Old Town Association, and AZ Culture as facilitators to get people, you know, AZ First and Local First were the facilitators of getting people to and from Phoenix. I think that was one of the primary reasons why we were so successful, because we are trying to think out of, outside the box and do what we call creative placemaking. And creative placemaking is exactly what you guys are involved with here in Cottonwood. You have used arts and culture and your tourism to grow your economy. And if you get a chance to look at the grant, I feel like it's, it's a, I brought a copy with me, I'm happy to leave it. But as I was doing the research for it, and before I actually came to Cottonwood, I, I think I probably had the same opinion about Cottonwood that most people in Phoenix do, is like, Cottonwood, you know, the last time I was here, I brought my daughter, we went to Blazenem, did the train. Old Town, Cottonwood, there wasn't really much here to do. What you guys have done with Old Town now, it's incredible. It's a hidden gem. I would much rather come here than go to Sedona. Nothing against Sedona, but it's just, it's just much more relaxing and much more kind of the, you know, the old relaxed, light-back experience with the wineries and the adventure and all that. So we've developed, the way we've developed our, our video, we want to keep it action-packed. We don't want a whole lot of talking. We want it to be, perhaps, we came up with this thing as, This is Cottonwood. So maybe one scene, you have This is Cottonwood, people are toasting their, their cups of wine. The next scene, somebody's coming out of an airplane, skydiving, This is Cottonwood. The next thing, they're out at Dead Horse Ranch, State Park, horseback riding, This is Cottonwood. We're just gonna, you know, piece after piece after piece of things that will be surprising to people who have not been here in a long time to see what, all the different things that you have to do and the three categories that we are using as a scavenger hunt, which is whining and dining, arts and culture, and adventure. So the contestants come up, they have to do at least a few in each category in order to win prizes that actually the merchants and your store owners have been very generous. We've, AZ Culture's come up numerous times with Old Town Association and Local First, and we have a very good participation with, we have three wineries that are going to participate. We have the skydiving that's gonna participate, horseback riding. We've got, I mean, just numerous, you know, the hotels. And we're still in the process of, you know, finishing up the final list of what the itinerary will be, but we, we think it's gonna be very successful. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that, and we are having our kickoff for the actual event on April 25th in Phoenix to promote this event. The, the press release has been sent out, it's gone all over the place through Local First, through us, through Arizona Tourism Department. So hopefully we get, even if we only get 50 people coming instead of the 200 that we want, the outcome is still gonna be positive, because the end result is that video. So it just gets scaled, you know, determined, you know, depending upon how many contestants come, we scale the event and we scale back what it is, you know, we're going to do budget-wise, but with the end result still being that video. So I'm not sure if there's anybody who has questions, I'm happy to answer. And I'm also happy, yeah.
Mr. Linsky?
I'm just curious, how, how, again, do you select the contestants that will come up?
Well, the contestants actually pay to participate. Because we did not want to place any additional burden on the merchants. We didn't want to have them come up and have, you know, 200 people trying to drink wine and eat and do all that. We felt that, number one, we're giving a really good deal. It's, it's $150. That includes your best trip to and from Phoenix.
Wow.
Includes two meals. Not everybody's gonna get to skydive, not everybody's gonna get to horseback ride. It's gonna be a first-come, first-served thing. So we've got, you know, if we have 200 contestants, we have eight people who can skydive. If we have 100, four. So it kind of goes in a scaled back thing, so we're hoping that encourages people to sign up quickly, so that they know if I, you know, if I want to skydive, I better be one of the first people to sign up for that. So it's, there are certain activities that, that require, you know, first-come, first-served. Everything else is paid for by the contestants and by the grant. Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments?
I just think this is another great event for Cottonwood. I've looked through the, all the material we got and it does explain about the $150 and it explains about all the events, too. And it just looks like it'd be a great, exciting day.
I wish I could participate, I wish I could actually.
That's what I'm thinking. I want to do this.
It's like my son does, he's like, "No, you can't, you're not gonna be qualified for that."
Looks terrific. I think it's a, a great thing for Cottonwood, just another great thing for Cottonwood.
Well, if anybody has any questions at all, I'm happy, I know Casey's got my contact information, so feel free to contact me with any questions.
And you're saying you'd rather come to Cottonwood than Sedona?
Yes.
I actually just wanted to repeat that.
I actually.
One of the things we really like here and people like here, and you may tell people, is we're very pedestrian-friendly here. You can park your car and spend the day on foot.
You have a ton of stuff to do. I mean, it's, it's amazing. I mean, after, when we started putting everything together and I thought, I mean, you can do that, you can do that, you can, you can do that, that's, that's pretty incredible.
We even have a trail that goes from the jail to.
Yeah, but that's included in our challenge.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
And there is disc golf down there, too.
Yeah. We've got, we're including the, we're actually expanding outside of Old Town Cottonwood, because I, I wanted to make sure that anybody who wanted to participate could. I, I feel like, you know, if you, like the golf courses participate, you know, Coyote Trails is gonna participate and, you know, of course, Red Rocks is out there. So logistically, it's been kind of trying to figure that all, all out, but I think we have it, have it pretty well covered. We're just, have a few things that we need to probably address through the temporary, you know, use permit.
And are you, are you working directly with?
We're working on that.
Dead Horse Ranch State Park?
Yes, we're working with Dead Horse, I have that application also, but some of this is contingent upon some questions that, that I still have that we'll probably get answered this week.
To be able to use the jail trail, we have to go through there and work with them.
Yeah, I have the state, yeah, we have to, I have to ensure the state of Arizona.
Yeah, it's a really collaborative partnership between the communities, but we have to follow all those.
That's okay.
Yeah. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it sounds very exciting.
All right, so if anybody has questions, feel free to call me. Thanks.
Well, if the council can help you or assist you in any way, please let us know.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks very much. The next item is Call to, is Call to the Public. Okay, the next item is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per Arizona Revised Statute 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So if there's something that you'd like to address that's not on the agenda, so far I think everything that I've gotten is an item on the agenda. Okay? Okay, and what is your name?
Michael Crawford Jacob.
I don't have an item for you.
Just give me two minutes.
Did you fill one of these out?
Did I do that?
Did you fill one of these out?
I did.
Okay. I'm trying to find it.
I signed at the very bottom.
Michael.
Jacob 820 Verde Valley School Road, Arizona.
Got it, yes, please continue.
Okay, Council. Old Phoenix resident since 1972. My parents Claus and Claire, Rosa Jacob, moved my family from Richardson, Texas to Phoenix. Sunny Sulp High School graduate, 1975. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna keep it short. I'm in your town, 'cause I came in Wednesday night to address court, two court issues in front of Judge Lundey, who, when I pled not guilty seven weeks prior, and I asked one of them was in Yavapai County Detention Center, he denied me a public defender. He said, "You will be defending yourself in the courtroom, expect 22 days in jail." Prior to that, six days homeless in Sedona in the freezing cold weather, got frostbite. Thank God they put me in jail. That was Gabriel Byrne of the Blue Moon Cafe in Village Oak Creek, standing on the corner of the Roundabout with a sign that says, "You're riding to Phoenix right now." Out of frustration, I ripped up a sleeping bag. He said I was yelling at cars. Prior to that, six days, spent five days in jail because of Laura Zubich, who resides and owns that home at 820 Verde Valley School Road. I was with that woman for 11 years, on and off, between Palm Springs and Sedona, worked on that property. The last renters was Eric Kay, his wife, three children. I ran into him Saturday night, chaperone. In December, my life took a turn. The last four months, it's been one hurricane, lost my identification. While I was in jail for disturbing the peace loud music by my neighbor, just taking over my apartment, run by, he's a part-time employee of a church, a small church called Mount Zion Community Church. Gave me that apartment January 19th, two years ago. I painted the exterior of all five, customized mine, 'cause I'm a custom painter, dry-protected floor, wood-stated laminate floor, in the oil fields of Texas, Oklahoma. I'm a musician from Phoenix. Started in Scottsdale at Anderson's Fifth Estate in Scottsdale in 1984. Came up to Sedona 15 years ago. I know Danny, I knew Danny Rhodes, I knew mostly musicians that have elite status in your community, including Sedona, Stanley Jordan. Just to drop some names, I played Showtime, I played the Rincon, Havelina Cantina, and Lucia Cruz. I know J.C., the father, the priest, St. John Bianni, I played in their choir. I rolled a car six weeks after I moved up there in August, 1998 or 99. My neighbor, Laura Lee Zubich, I lived on Moon's View, caught Mandy, 'cause I had kind of courted her and dated her, she was older than me, doesn't matter, she's the owner of that home. She arrested me, 'cause I wouldn't go back to Palm Springs with her. I had a girlfriend who I helped become clean and sober, was arrested by Sheriff Joe Arpaio two years ago, this past January. She's gone through NCAD, she's completed the programs, she's now living with her mother, taking care of her mother with a full-time job and a car. I'm homeless, because of the chain of events, I came up to Sedona, never would've happened. I'd still be in that apartment, you wouldn't be, I wouldn't be standing in front of anybody. I need this stuff. I need these charges dismissed. I was not granted a public defender twice I asked, twice I was denied. I showed up April 10th, no one else did. Judge Lundey wasn't present if someone dated April 10th. His signature, his stamp, that he has given me a public defender. I waited outside on the picnic bench by myself, you can see from those court steps, you can see one man sitting there waiting to, public defender named Mansel Meyer, supposed to beat my, I don't want him. I know David.
You know, Mr. Jacobs?
For 40 years.
We don't have any authority.
Stand, look, Judge Lundey.
We have no authority over the Judge Lundey.
You don't?
For our council.
Then Yavapai County, your justice system is in, in Cottonwood.
We have a justice system, but we're, we're.
How do I make it known?
We're separate.
I got a shaft from the judge, from the judge and the justice system.
We have.
I trust the pass of the property. I've got a motion in my pocket to drop these charges, I'm gonna bring Arizona Republic up. The justice system here, gonna take a hit. Two sheriffs.
We, we don't have any authority.
You heard my plea. That's my plight, I'm homeless. I'm in your town one day, tomorrow, hopefully, the man who promised me work, a mover, will take me to West Sedona or the village, move a, move a family, for two days, he's Scottsdale, I'll have him drop me off. Come back up, make 15s if I have to. But I'm gonna try, I'm gonna get motion to get my property out of 820. I can't be a custom painter and I can't be a musician, she's got everything I own, three bags. You know what those stand for? Your community.
So thank you very much.
Phoenix to help me, including Cottonwood.
Mr. Jacobs? We have no authority to help you, but I wish you the very best.
Job connection, everybody's clothing, Catholic Social Services, if it wasn't for the mercy of them.
They're an excellent organization.
But I'm not.
Yes. Well, I'm happy they could help you.
I like that.
I hope you get it back.
That's all I believe.
I hope you get it back.
Well, you got beautiful cities. When I got out of Detention Center, I'll tell you this, I fell in love with Chipper, you're a great talent.
All right.
That, that I'm getting shafted by the justice system. The police have been very fair with me. Just want to let you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We wish you the very best. Okay.
You'll be the very best when you guys need ghost, I go home, I'm bored as well as worried, I want to go as soon as possible. All I want is freedom, so I can leave the state, not enough.
Okay, the next item, any more comments for, yes?
I feel about one of those.
Okay, Mr. Han, former mayor Han, let's see, somewhere I have.
I'm a longtime resident here and for the past seven years, I've been almost a daily user of the dog park. Summer's coming. The budget hearings are coming. And we have a petition signed by about 125 users of the dog park, one paragraph. We, the other signed users of the Cottonwood Dog Park, respectfully request that the city council seriously consider adding at least two, preferably three, sunshade structures during the upcoming budget considerations. We feel that these structures would make the park more comfortable for both the dogs and their owners. Currently, nearly all summer use is concentrated during the few hours following dawn and just before sunset, and these structures will spread out the park's use during the middle of the day. I think we asked for this last year and it was overlooked, but when you come to the Parks and Recreation Budget, think about this. Parks and Recreation Budget, think about this. On a related subject, perhaps somebody should look at the acoustic fence down there. The wind has damaged it and it needs to be repaired.
Okay, and so your name again?
I didn't hear you.
Your name again?
Don Han.
Well, I don't have a form here for you and I was, I called you Mr. Han, former mayor Han, but I don't see anything here. So for the record, it's Mr. Han.
I left it behind there when I.
Oh, that's okay. So, so you're asking, what you're asking for is shade structures in the dog park?
Yes.
And the second thing again, remind me?
Uh, there's some damage to the acoustic fence.
Oh, you know, when I was down there, I noticed that and I wanted to ask the city manager, but I can't do that right now about that. So later. Thank you very much for your comments. So could, city manager, could you take, take notes on that and?
Yeah.
For the budget and we can discuss it during the budget season or session?
We approved that.
We approved it, the shade structures?
It was part of the budget.
Okay, well, the city manager can check on that.
I don't recall that.
I don't either, so, okay.
Mayor, I'll scan the petitions and send it to the council.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your work. All right, approval of the minutes is the next item. Mr. Pratt?
I approve the regular meeting minutes of March 18th and April 1st, 2014.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion and Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is Resolution Number 2745, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the joint participation in the reconstruction of Mingus Avenue from Main Street to State Route 89A. Item number two is purchase and acceptance of easements from George and Josephine Gutierrez for the 12th Street Reconstruction Project. Item number three is acceptance of a public rights of way, temporary construction easements, and permanent sidewalk and drainage easements from 12th Street property owners Bugbee, Goodwin, Wells Fargo, Autozone, and Escalante Living Trust for the 12th Street Improvement Project. Item number four is Cottonwood Recreation Center Proposed Membership Incentive Partnership Program for VVMC, Verdi Valley Medical Center, cardiac rehabilitation patients. Item number five is request for grant funding from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to enhance the police department's radio communications capabilities. Item number six is amendment number one to lease agreement with the Verdi Valley Humane Society. Item number seven is the amended part of the agenda, a new liquor license application for Tamara Morkin, owner of that brewery, microbrewery located at 300 East Cherry Street. Council members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion? Are there any items that the public would like to pull for discussion? And all of these items, everything that the council has got and studied about these items is available on the website, www.cottonwoodaz.gov. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Haddig?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Haddig made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read Resolution Number 2745 by Senator Longley.
Resolution Number 2745, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for the joint participation of the reconstruction of Mingus Avenue from Main Street to State Route 89A. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item number 11 is new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is application request to exceed the presumptive 60-foot height limitation on cellphone towers by up to 30 feet for a tower to be located south of the VFW building located at 705 East Aspen Avenue. It seems like this packet was so big that it has trouble popping up on the iPads. So.
Some links are difficult.
Just a moment. While we get there. Okay, here we go. So we have Community Development Manager Baron Najad to present this item.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, and we are here for the expansion of 30-foot expansion of cell phone towers, 60-foot existing ordinance. This is for the VFW site 705 East Aspen. And it is located on 6th Street and Aspen Street. And zoning is CF, community facility. And our ordinance said originally, overall height could not exceed the 60-foot antenna. Modification is set up in 2013 to the ordinance. We added, it said maximum of 60 foot, feet, 60 feet from the ground of the highest physical point of the structure provided. However, that a wireless communication structure antenna and antenna area up to 90 feet from the ground to the highest physical point on the structure may be permitted in any zoning except our one district and all town historic districts with the approval of the city council with upon showing by the applicant that the additional height is the least intrusive means of filling a significant gap. And following two cases are fitting in this case that they, they need to exceed the 60-foot allowing and they need to go up to 90-foot. This is a site, currently side pictures. Sorry, this is not. These are the site plans for the VFW site provided by the applicant. They will be going into details of this one. And here, as you see, this is the antenna, but it will be covered up and looks like in three. Planning and commission, planning and zoning commission heard this argument February 24th meeting. There were 16 sign up residents, six were opposition, five were for the project, and four, oh, sorry. Five people talked about the project was from VFW, members of the VFW. And at the end of the meeting, that was approved 5 to 1. And applicant is here and also is our city attorney for the details, legal details of that. Any questions? And I would like to turn it to the applicants for the details.
Okay. So we have the applicants. Who is here to represent us? Your, your name, please?
Lady Baron, Council. My name is Craig Lake.
Craig Lake, okay.
Lake, I represent Capital Telecom.
Okay, and you signed a form here, so.
I did sign a form. And while you're looking for that, I'm gonna try to get my PowerPoint up on.
Okay, just go ahead and. Greg Lake, okay.
It's been good for your health. First thing I'd like to do is just take a moment and talk about why we're here. What brings us here tonight? Why is it important that we speak to the city council about what we're trying to accomplish in the town of Cottonwood? The answer to that is overwhelming consumer and public safety demand for wireless services in this area. Let's talk briefly about some numbers. In the past six years, mobile usage. Okay, thank you. In the past six years, the increase on AT&amp;T's wireless network has increased 30,000 percent. That's not double, that's not triple, that's not 10 times, that's not even 100 times growth. That's a 30,000 percent growth on the wireless network in the last six years alone. 56 percent of all Americans in 2014 own a smartphone. The average smartphone has 41 apps. Every single day in the United States, 400,000 911 calls are made on a wireless network. There is overwhelming demand for wireless services across the country, in Arizona, and in Cottonwood. That's why we're here. Community investment. Over the last six years alone, AT&amp;T has spent $775 million across Arizona in bringing wireless services and upgrading its wireless services in the state of Arizona. This, bringing wireless coverage for data and for voice, brings jobs, it brings, brings money into the economy. It's been estimated that for every dollar that is spent in building broadband in an economy, seven to $10 is generated as a multiplier effect. So bringing this broadband and bringing voice, good quality coverage is vital to any community, including Cottonwood. But what does it mean to us individually and to each individual resident? What we really care about and what every citizen in this community really cares about is when they flip on their phone or they try to get to the internet. They want to make sure that they have good coverage or that they have good data connections. And AT&amp;T is committed to building a world-class, cutting-edge wireless network here in Cottonwood. Why? Because the citizens of Cottonwood overwhelmingly have asked for it and what they demand and the usage that they place on the wireless networks. It used to be that years ago, the site up at Mingus Mountain provided a large coverage over most of this area. That was before a 30,000 percent increase in wireless coverage. We have to have the facilities to accommodate the explosive growth in the wireless demand in this area. Okay, now to our site. This site, as you know, is located, is located within the area for the VFW property, which is located immediately north of the slag pit, right close to the fairgrounds. Who's got the pointer? Oh, thank you. That working? There we go. So, and there's the VFW facility, the wireless facility, go right in here and there's the slag pit area that we're referring to. There's the site that Baron referred to earlier, the site elevations, you can see briefly what it would look like. I have some more photo simulations that we'll show a little bit later. But you can see that we'll have a 90-foot tower that will be camouflaged with branches. When we were in the P&amp;Z hearing a couple of months ago, members of the P&amp;Z asked us to meet a certain stipulation for the density of the branches. We stipulated and agreed to do that so we can provide good camouflaging for that area. You'll also note that while AT&amp;T will be located up here, we've also made provision so that there will be space for additional carriers as well. So if a Sprint or a Verizon or a T-Mobile comes and says, "We want to go on your site," we don't have to come back to you and say, "We want to build another tower over here." You can turn to them and say, "Yes, we've got a tower over at VFW. You can go over here into this site." All right. Now, as your staff, as your ordinance, revised ordinance says, "I've got to show two things tonight." Number one, I got to show there's a significant gap in the coverage. And number two, I got to show that this is the least intrusive means to fill that gap. Here's what we call a coverage map. This is a RF coverage map. And from my simple lawyer mind, I try to remember this. Green, this is backwards, isn't it? Red is good.
Sure, red is, red and yellow is bad.
Okay, red and yellow is bad and we want to have green coverage. Is that? Yeah, okay. As you can see, what we've got in this area is we have pockets and gaps of coverage that run through here, through this area, through this area, and down over here. We're not getting the coverage that we need in those areas. We have a significant gap in coverage where people are losing their calls. People are not getting the internet coverage or internet access that they're hoping for, particularly when they're in their homes. So we have a significant gap in, gap in coverage.
And Madam Mayor, and Greg, if I can just interject, we have two in-house, two retained engineers who'll be able to confirm or elaborate on the assertions Mr. Lake is making.
Okay.
And that's important. Let me just, and I appreciate Mr. Horton mentioning that. We have done zoning hearings throughout the state of Arizona and Cottonwood is one of the first cities in the state of Arizona that has gone out independently and obtained its own independent RF engineer. So that when you listen to me, you don't have to either believe or disbelieve me just based on how you feel about my presentation. You've gone out and you've got an independent voice who will provide you information. We appreciate you doing that. Okay, so that's our significant gap in coverage. How do we fill that gap?
Mr. Pratt?
Yes, sir.
The red and yellow is where there's poor coverage, green is good. What is blue?
We're gonna ask, we brought Mr. Oscar Selick, who's our RF engineer and can speak to this and can describe what the legends mean.
Or lack of legends. Mayor, council, my name is Oscar Selick. I'm an RF engineer representing AT&amp;T. First of all, you asked about the blue. You would think of it as a sliding scale. It's a signal strength value. Obviously, it's worse than green, green being the strongest, but it's still acceptable as far as data speeds. And if I may quickly point out, the projector is kind of not doing a good job differentiating between the yellow and green. If you were to look closely, it's actually mostly yellow in that area, although it's hard to tell.
Thank you.
So I looked at all of your maps and my house is still gonna be in yellow no matter what.
My cell site in your backyard, Miss Madam Mayor. There are ways, there are ways to address that issue. Matter of fact, I have that same problem with a, with a home and I put what we call a microcell in your home and you can work with AT&amp;T to solve that problem. So if we have, if we get approval this evening to build one 90-foot tower at the VFW location right here, then what we do is we fill in most of those gaps that exist today. Okay, there's, for basis of comparison, there's the existing coverage, there would be the new coverage. Can you see the difference? Existing, new. All right, so you're, we're filling in gaps by putting in one 90-foot tower. All right? We believe that one 90-foot tower is the least intrusive means to fill that gap. We also, there's other reasons we'll to describe later, make it least intrusive. Now, question was brought up, what are some other alternatives that you've looked at? One of, one of the other alternatives that we've looked at. One of the other alternatives that we've looked at is, if we kept this site, if we kept this site at 60 feet, the way the ordinance originally was drafted, in order to meet that, in order to fill that same gap of coverage, we would have to go out, identify locations for, obtain zoning approval for, enter into leases, and build three, possibly four, 60-foot towers in residential areas in the locations that we've specified here on the map.
And as I understand it, according to ordinance, you could, you don't even need to come to us, you have a right to build those four towers in that spot?
Mr. Horton, you want to...
We're subject to some design review and some processes before planning and zoning, that's essentially correct. It's, in all likelihood, if they stayed under the 60-foot limitation, the council would not...
Would not hear that.
...see these matters.
We believe, though, that one 90-foot tower by the slag pit, right next to the VFW facility, is less intrusive than trying to go out and build three, possibly four more sites in the neighborhoods of Cottonwood. Question also that came up early in the process of our applications, why don't you go build a site out on the water tank? We addressed that, and we, Oscar did a map that would show the possible coverage for that area. You can see that if we put the tank on the water tower, we would still have this huge gap in coverage. So the water tank does not fill the gap either. So what's this, we've talked about the significant gap that we've got. We've talked about the alternatives that we've looked at to try to fill that gap. We believe the 90-foot tower next to the slag pit at VFW is the least intrusive way to fill that gap. What's this tower going to look like, or this, we'll call it a monopine, what's this monopine going to look like once it's built? I've got five different perspectives from various locations around the streets to show what it would look like. From Sixth Street and Cherry, looking east, you can't see the tower. You would not be able to see the tower. From Aspen and Fourth Street, looking southward, this is the before picture, that's the after picture. Before, after. Next perspective is on Beach Circle, looking west, that's before, that's after. On 12th Street and Birch, looking west, before, after. From the, and I think this is what the Cottonwood Motor Vehicles Building, which is located down in that area, from that parking lot or in front of that street, looking northwest, that's the before view, and that's the after view. Before and after. Okay. Now, when I sit down here, several people may come up and they're going to present before you a parade of horribles about cellular sites. And they're going to try to convince you that most of society's evils are as a result of the proliferation of cell sites in our country. I want you to think of three guiding principles as you listen to what they have to say. First, the Telecom Act of 1996 has told us that no local government or state government can regulate wireless facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. Okay?
Everybody will get their chance to speak.
Mr. Horton can address that issue and provide independent counsel to the City Council on that. Second, the American Cancer Society, I pulled a quote off their website, and I'll quote it directly, says, "Some people have expressed concern that living, working, or going to school near a cellphone tower might increase the risk of cancer or other health problems. At this time, there is very little evidence to support this idea." The FCC, Federal Communications Commission, has said, "Radio frequency emissions from antennas used for cellular and PCS, which is the same as cellular, transmissions result in exposure levels on the ground that are typically thousands of times below safety limits." Please keep that in mind as you listen to some of the people that speak here tonight. I'm happy to address any questions, and I'd like to reserve some time at the conclusion to address any comments that are made from the public.
And you are Mr. Lake.
Yes, ma'am.
So any questions for Mr. Lake by the council?
I have some.
Yes, Mr. Garrison?
Could we pull up Baron's first slide, the one that talks about what's necessary to preclude the 60-foot regulated height? I guess one of the questions I have about this, well, there's actually two, because I'm tying this together with the next agenda item as well, is you talk about the need to put in one single 90-foot in order to preclude putting in four 60-foot towers. Yet what you're asking, what you're actually coming tonight for is two 90-foot towers, not four 60-foot towers. So is that not true?
Let me address, first of all, we're here to address one item. Mr. Horton, can we address two items?
Well, Mr. Lake, Madam Mayor, Mr. Garrison, I believe there's two separate applicants here, there's two separate items on your agenda. I think...
Thought they were both AT&amp;T towers.
To date, Mr. Lake has not entered into appearance on behalf of the second applicant, unless he's doing so tonight.
I'd be happy to answer the question, though, if you want...
Well, I guess I haven't gotten there yet, is... My first question was if this 60, if this 60 goes to 90-foot, according to the presentation, you will no longer need the other three 60-foot towers. But that's not what I'm seeing presented, I'm seeing that we're actually going to start seeing a whole bunch of 90-foot towers. And so what I, I guess I was going to ask was if you get this 90-foot tower versus the 60-foot towers, would your expectations be to put no more towers in the city of Cottonwood?
Let me answer your question with this, with a slide. Can you scroll that down a little bit? Okay. The gap, the gap that we are trying to fill is this gap right here, this area. This has a gap. That's what we're trying to fill with this 90-foot tower. We're saying here tonight that there have been other alternatives that we consider, have considered, we believe none of them are acceptable or as, or actually more intrusive than the 90-foot tower. There are two, there are, there is just not one gap in the city that needs to be filled. As I said up here, YA 69, which is up here, and YA 71, which is down here, these show as though they go on air as planned, so they show as no gap. If we put up a RF map that showed existing without those sites on air, you would see gaps down here as well. Yes, you would fill the gaps that are created by this new 90-foot site at the VFW, but you would still have gaps that you need to cover with these other two sites. So this second site at Mingus Mountain still needs to cover gaps that are down in this Is that it, your question?
Somewhat. So I guess what I'm after, I'll go back to making it real simple, with this 90-foot tower, you won't be asking, or AT&amp;T won't be asking for any more towers to exceed the 60-foot limit inside the city of Cottonwood.
I don't have an answer to that question. How do you wish to address that question? We have Scott September, who is the Director for the Southwest Region of the United States for AT&amp;T, here with us.
Hello, my name is Scott September, my address is 20830 North Tatum Boulevard, Suite 400, Phoenix, Arizona, 85050. Mayor and Councilmember Garrison, it's difficult to predict what kind of capacity or coverage needs might happen in the future. These sites, they cover a finite area. They cover those areas for coverage, but they also cover those areas for capacity. Each cell site can only handle so much data usage or voice traffic. So today, this site meets our needs. Does that help?
And if they, if they have usage growing of 30,000 percent, how can we predict, really?
No, I guess what I see is I just see this becoming the first of many. You know, it's being sold on the premise that we're going to get rid of four sites to put up one, but then I think we're just going to start seeing a whole trail of 90-foot towers being installed around town. And I guess I'm trying to, if we're going to end up with towers installed all over town, why shouldn't we just go ahead and put in the 60-foot towers instead of making 90-foot towers, if that's where we're going down the road anyway?
A lot of, the demand of the future will be driven by what your citizens want. If your citizens want more coverage and more data capacity, we hope to provide that, and we need to come before you if we need to build more towers. But today is all we can deal with, and today's situation indicates, as Mr. September said, that this satisfies and fills the gap for today's needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions I can address?
Madam Mayor and Council, I would venture, and, you know, we had these two applicants come in contemporaneously, but it will be incumbent on the second applicant, I think, to make the showing, the same showings of necessity that Mr. Lake articulated, based on, if you approve this application, based on the conditions as they would exist with a 90-foot tower at the VFW site. You are entitled to presume that if you approve it.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, we did get a report from the RF engineer that the city hired, and he did get, have some information from a former AT&amp;T employee who worked on this. And he does say that it is his opinion that at least one and possibly two additional towers would be required to fill in the deficient areas with only a 60-foot tower. So our engineer that we hired independently did find that, yes, that was true, that one tower would take the place of two or three.
And the council can and should hear from not only the applicant's engineer, but the two engineers that receive city paychecks.
And so if they would like to, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we may have more questions. It would be Tad Conyer and Rick Tannen Bell? If you gentlemen would like to come up and speak about your studies or...
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Tad Conyer. I reside in Lake Monizuma, Arizona. I was, I'm primarily a public safety RF engineer. However, I was brought on to this project by your attorney to kind of review the initial application, which I did, and ran similar coverage studies that have been presented here today, and basically concluded that the studies are accurate and they do depict reality as far as an RF environment is involved. And it's also correct in their statement that if they built a shorter tower to get the penetration in the height above average terrain in the general area, they would require more towers to fill in that area. Their data and their documentation is correct, and it's basically, it's not magic, it's engineering, RF engineering. The one thing that I do want to add is they've done a really good job of due diligence. I've been involved with lots of cellular lease negotiations, both as the Lisi and the Lisor, and they've done good due diligence as far as allowing for multi-tenancy on this tower, which means that other carriers have the ability to co-locate on this one structure and not come in for a second application or a third application or a fourth application. That's not to say that there might not be that in the future, but the ability, and the height requirement for AT&amp;T allows them to get the RF penetration that's required to get the signal to the consumer. It also is required to offer vertical separation of co-location of other carriers. So if they built a lower tower, the ability to co-locate more carriers on that same structure would basically be null, because they wouldn't have the necessary vertical separation to separate each carrier from each other because of interference issues. DARF energy would interfere with each other.
By the way, Council, feel free to interrogate the engineers, because English is their second language.
Yeah.
Mr. Elkes.
Any questions?
I do have a question. So with the 90-foot tower, co-location, the prospects of co-location, I'm assuming that the one on top is the one that gets the best coverage.
Right.
And so the ones below are, you know, lower on the totem pole, so to speak. So will they make the argument that they still need, I mean, I know you can't answer this question, but I mean, in your experience, you know, studying these things, in the past, has that occurred where Verizon or T-Mobile or whomever would come in and say, "We want to be at 90-foot, we're not going to settle, we don't want to co-locate because we're not going to get as good a coverage?"
Yes, it's possible they could say that. However, with, so, center line, what's your center line? 85? 80? So the next co-location would be 71, 10 feet. 10 feet isn't that big a deal for the second carrier. You're not going to see a drastic propagation difference. Possibly the third carrier may complain. I guess politely saying there's a pecking order in the cellular world, and that is usually driven by money. And so you're going to see the AT&amp;Ts and Verizons want that upper pecking order, and they're going to pay premium price for that real estate. Other carriers may not be willing to pay for that premium price, and they may just accept poorer coverage. That's kind of an industry consequence of co-location.
Okay. My other part of the question is for our city attorney, whose third language is English.
That would hurt if it wasn't true.
So my question would be, what's the council's, how much sway do we have over telling a carrier, if they want to locate Cottonwood, that they must co-locate on the monopine? That we've already...
We are, I, that was a point I was hoping to get to make, and sooner rather than later. Our current ordinance, I believe, encourages co-location. Other ordinances out there, and I believe we're working on one, and it may be as part of the outcome of tonight, we hear from council that the direction that that becomes a priority, that that gets reshuffled, and we, there are more comprehensive ordinances out there, there are more directive ordinances out there, more restrictive ordinances that say you will co-locate. And, you know, if you're going to do this in this particular zone, you will co-locate, you will first show us that you have looked at existing tall buildings, water tanks, high ground, and make these showings. Our ordinance is not that detailed yet, but it certainly can be. We have examples we're looking at. We need to, also, we can't just cut and paste. We have to look at our topography and our community and what works for us, and, you know, that's not an overnight project. But we encourage co-location, and we can encourage it even more strongly legislatively in future changes to our zoning ordinance.
And I'd have a little addition to that, having experienced those ordinances. Sedona has one that's fairly decent but fairly gray at the same time. It puts the burden on the tower owner to meet the standards. Like I mentioned before, money drives the world, and it's a lot cheaper to co-locate than build a tower.
Okay.
So the carriers tend to look for vertical steel or real estate that's already there, because it's tremendously cheaper, not only for the actual vertical height, but also the facilities that are already brought to the base. You have your network and your fiber, your power that's already there that they don't have to reinvent, basically.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
Mr. Pratt?
I've got a question maybe for city attorney. We talked about the Telecommunications Act of 1996, I believe it was, and up there it said you cannot make a, refuse... said you cannot make a, refuse a permit for a cell tower based on the environment. Is health included in that acto?
Yes, yes. I think once, and this is outside the city's jurisdiction, once a carrier meets the FCC's promulgated regulations for emissions, and they are regulated and monitored by the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, state and local government is directed to be hands-off. And as I think the council has heard from me before, in this hierarchical constitutional system of government, when a higher level of government prohibits a lower level of government from doing something, that's the reality.
So in some ways, our hands are tied, I think, by the FCC ruling. And, you know, on a personal level, it concerns me that there's not more science out there. I've done extensive research and read a lot of, and it seems like these just haven't been around long enough to ascertain what the long-term effects are. But then again, I know we are tied by that. Eventually, maybe we'll have the science showing that. And I do know the American Cancer Society site did say there's really no harm at this time. So they are still studying it in the science. However, that FCC act seems to put us in a certain position. We cannot override the higher levels' ruling.
In other words, Congress made a policy decision that applies nationwide, that the uncertainty, that even though there may be uncertainty, that the FCC will set emission standards, and those will be the standards that must be met, and if they're met, decisions about placement and regulation and aesthetics of towers are largely reserved to local government, but based on aesthetic, historic preservation, those sorts of considerations, but not the health and environmental effects of RF.
To that end, I imagine there may be precedent of other places that have attempted to sidestep that and basically just move themselves into years of litigation. That's kind of the next step, right? If someplace says it doesn't want to abide by that, then it just goes to court for a long time? More or less?
Sure, and those are fact-driven cases, and how long they take depends upon the court, the court's docket, the facts, the parties, all sorts of other variables. Federal cases are very expensive, and as your attorney, I'd want to know that whatever decision you make, the basis for it is something that's defensible. I guess this is a good time to interject, and this is a little, you know, dialogue I've had with Mr. Lake over a period of months.
Thank you, Mr. Conyer.
Thanks, Tad. I've challenged Mr. Lake to provide me with authority for the proposition that if you deny the ninety-foot tower, the outcome will be a lawsuit over the issue that the ninety-foot tower was truly the least intrusive alternative. And I've neither, I've not found any, and he's not provided any. So that leads me to conclude, and, you know, he can tell me he has other plans or has come up with that authority. My expectation is this applicant will proceed with the other alternative, which is more towers, perhaps unacceptably more towers from the community's perspective, in less-desirable locations. And that is, in my opinion, right now, based on what I understand, squarely the issue before you. You make the policy decision. Do you want fewer taller towers or more plentiful smaller ones?
Mr. Pratt?
I'm going to make another assumption here. I would assume that the amount of radiation then reaching the ground would be much less with a ninety-foot tower than a sixty-foot tower?
That is my understanding from my engineers, from our engineers, and I, as I already disclosed, I don't speak engineer, so I'll let them attempt to do that. And I already spoke with at least Mr. Tannahill, who I think is prepared to offer the council some information about that. Either now or later.
Mr. Tannahill?
Thank you, Mayor Jones, council members. I'm Rick Tannahill of Glendale, Arizona. I'm a registered professional engineer in Arizona for not quite the last forty years. It's been a long time, though. And my background goes way back, like Ted's, before there were cell phones, into the public safety and utility communications. In the past, I've helped some cities in the valley draft their ordinances, Gilbert and Litchfield Park, and I believe Paradise Valley. Last November, I believe it was, Steve contacted me and asked me if I would be interested in reviewing the application, first for the VFW site to see whether the ninety-foot height was warranted, and later on for the other site, Mingus High School. I looked at the VFW site and the information provided by AT&amp;T. My software is considerably less sophisticated than theirs, probably costs a lot less, too. But basically, from the information they were providing me, I could definitely tell that there's a couple of areas that would need additional sites, at least two additional sites, and possibly more, as I say, their software is more sophisticated. The reason for a lot of this is driven by two or three technical factors, and I hope I don't see the eyes blaze over, yes, English is my second language. First of all, an RF signal degrades as the square of the distance from the source. So the further you get, the weaker the signal by the square, which is bad. Secondly, as we go up in frequency, the signal deteriorates faster and is blocked by things that are thinner and even tree leaves at some of the frequencies we're talking about. These carriers have to operate at now, because there's nothing left down in the lower frequencies. It's all used. So what that means is basically you have to either have more power, not a great idea because that gets into RF exposure, or sites that are closer together. And that's what we're dealing with here tonight, is we have to get off Mingus Mountain and get some sites closer to the users. You gain several things. First of all, you gain signal strength because of that square of the distance. You also gain the ability to reuse frequencies, meaning you can serve a lot more customers at the same time, when you can use same frequencies from this cell, jump a cell over here, you can reuse them again. That's part of the thinking. The sixty-foot height, yes, indeed, there would be two or three more sites for AT&amp;T, and behind them, there's probably Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, anybody else in the future that might want to jump into this financial bonanza we call smartphones. Also, I mentioned something else that takes more signal now are the very high-speed data signals. The 3G and 4G LTE that are coming are, require about ten decibels, which is a factor of ten, more signal than the narrowband voice data signals that we're used to on the old simple phones. So basically, it all points to the fact there's going to be more towers, yes. How many more depends upon how high we let them go. The RF exposure does go down as you go up in height, because the point at which the beam reaches the ground is further out and away, square of the distance again. So if you end up with sixty-foot towers, three or four for AT&amp;T, you might end up with four more for Verizon, four more for Sprint, four more for T-Mobile. Pretty soon, you're showing up in people's backyards, not necessarily a good thing. And more obtrusive, because they probably wouldn't be disguised as trees either, so. I tend to support the idea of a ninety-foot tower at the VFW site for all those reasons. I guess, are there any questions?
You entered mine. Have I glazed over the eyes sufficiently?
And I read your report in our packets, so.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And at some point, Mayor and Council, we have the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission who...
I was headed on my list to call him up. So, Mr. Kyler. Ed Kyler is the chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission, and they, this has come before them, and they did make a decision. And our code does say that council can defer to, if we wished, we can defer to Planning and Zoning Commission and accept their decision. That would be up to council to do that. So, Mr. Kyler?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You should know that the commission put in at least three months examining this thing and what we should do and what we shouldn't do. And by a vote of five to one, we recommended to the council that it be approved. However, during our discussions prior to the taking of the vote, there was some concerns about a ninety-foot tower, the aesthetics of it, and even though there's, Congress in its infinite wisdom said, "You can't take health and safety into it," it was partially considered. However, we felt that based on information that we received from Rick, who was just up here, and from the applicant themselves, and the good advice of council, that to prevent any real problems as far as lawsuits and so forth as they go, we offered a recommendation of five to one. There is another item on the agenda similar. I have some other information that I'd like to put out as relates to that one. I promise not to repeat myself. Any questions?
Questions?
I don't think so.
We did the best we could.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, for public comment, is there any way we could take both items, comment for both items, or do we have to separate them?
Madam Mayor, that would be in the council's discretion, especially if you anticipate, and it turns out, that the public comments really do speak to both applications.
So what's the council's pleasure? Would you want to talk about both items and then take?
I think so.
Okay. I'm guessing that we've pretty much covered a lot of this stuff for even the second application, that they're very similar. So, okay, who's presenting the second application? That's Ms. Najad?
The second application is located at 1801 East Fourth Street. This is a Mingus High School, Mingus Greening High School site. Again, planning commission, but this is under February twenty-four meeting. This is, this is, sorry. This is the site location, Camino Real and First Street, and this general area, again, First Street being located here, and Camino Real. And it is zone AR20 and surrounded by AR43. And zoning ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, needs to show the need for the extension or additional thirty feet in addition to sixty-foot allowed use. These are site plans provided by the applicant for the high school site. I'm going to go through these quickly, because applicant has very detailed presentation for you. Again, this is a high school campus, track area, Camino Real, and antenna is located around the, close to tennis courts. These are the details of the mechanical details of the antenna, and this is the elevation, the way it's going to look, mechanics of it, and it's going to look like a pine tree. This is the final product it would look like when it is built. And this is the existing site right now in this high school campus. And again, different applicant, he is here for detailed presentation, I will bring it up.
Can I just ask one quick thing?
Sure.
Baron, if you don't mind, didn't we recently rezone that property just adjacent to the high school?
Yes, that was for the PAD, this is show...
Okay, and your name, sir?
Good evening, my name is Jekyll and Murphy, and we're currently called Oak Tree Consulting, representing AT&amp;T. My address is 1525 North Hayden Road, Suite 100 in Scottsdale, Arizona. So I'll focus on this site. Greg had spoken a little bit earlier about AT&amp;T's challenges and the rationale for these Basically, the four-to-one ratio that Greg spoke about applies at this location also. So what we have here is, we have a coverage gap which mainly exists to the west of Mingus High School. And with that, when you go west of Mingus High School, as you probably all are well aware, it's residential, single-family residential. So naturally, when we go out and we look at trying to address a gap in coverage, and this kind of goes to council member Garrison's question earlier, we call this, this is called, what we call in the industry, a ring, where we have a gap in service. The VFW site is also a ring where we have a gap in service, which the four-to-one rule kind of applies. If we can meet our objective with a ninety-foot, then we eliminate the need for proliferation of other towers. The challenge here was, when we would go and look at our ring and try and address the gap in coverage and find the least intrusive location, we would naturally gravitate towards commercial properties, existing cell towers, that kind of thing, because to be honest, it's the least resistant and the fastest, most cost-effective way of doing business. That's the way the industry typically approaches these. So if you look at where Mingus High School is, naturally, we looked along Highway 260, where there are commercial properties, et cetera, and we tried to see if there's a willing landlord or a potential site that would meet setbacks, meet the ordinance. But the challenge we have off the bat is, if you look at this particular area, you see there's contour lines on this, on this area? So if you look at Highway 260, it's about a hundred foot of an elevation difference from where we're proposing the site at Mingus High School. So right off the bat, if we were to do the same site, ninety-foot monopine, the top of the pine tree wouldn't even be level with the bottom of where we're proposing at Mingus. So that was really the challenge here, is that with the challenge and the gap in service being west of Mingus High School, mainly in a residential area, if we were to put a site along Highway 260, it just wouldn't be able to address the gap at all. In fact, the top of the pine tree wouldn't even reach over the school property. So the next natural location to explore, obviously, was the high school. Also, what noting is that if you look at this portion where there actually are ball field lights, that's about a sixty-foot-ish difference in elevation. And again, if we were to do the same height of a monopine down there, it would be really ineffective in addressing the gap in coverage that exists. So here's the general location of where we're proposing the site, which is, you know, one of the highest locations on the Mingus High School property. And if you were to look at that and basically look at applying, you know, the four-to-one ratio, you know, I think it's fair to say that it would be very challenging to try and move west into these single-family residential areas and propose any kind of site. It just, I'm sure it wouldn't be well-received at all. So really, our options are basically very limited. This height, this ninety-foot pine tree, doesn't entirely address our gap in coverage, but it goes a long way. But we do believe it's the least intrusive and the most effective way of addressing our gap in service. So with that, and Greg mentioned earlier, AT&amp;T is agreeable to basically placing the best possible quality of a pine tree that we know is available to us as an industry, because there are some poor examples out there, I don't know if you've ever seen. There are some pine trees that are, they call them monopines, but they really don't resemble a pine tree. What we're doing here, basically, we've agreed to actually copy a pine tree... What we're doing here, basically, we've agreed to actually copy a pine tree that we're building. We recently had a pine tree approved at Flagstaff Mall, and the folks in Flagstaff are very familiar and experienced with pine trees and monopines in that market. And so, they came to us with a requirement as far as density and branch design, and a whole list of requirements that they want to see on a pine tree, which we're basically going to do the same here. In other words, we're basically going to go to the industry and trying to get, cure the best possible monopine that's available to the industry. And the other thing I'd like to mention also is that on our elevation view, you know, although we show the AT&amp;T antennas here, this site will be designed to accommodate other carriers. And, you know, as a practical standpoint, you may not be aware, but I've been doing this for, you know, 15 years in the state of Arizona, and it surprises a lot of people to learn that, you know, wood carriers in this market, of course, they're very competitive on the retail side, but actually on the network side, they cooperate really well. You know, they all have agreements that make it very easy for any carrier to co-locate on each other's towers. And to be honest, as a practical matter, if there was another carrier looking to address a gap in the vicinity of Mingus High School, they would naturally gravitate towards an existing site like this because it would be cost-effective and easy, and the ordinance would almost require that another carrier rule this site out as not being a viable candidate. So, you know, I understand the dilemma you have, 90-foot versus 60-foot, and honestly, there's not a big difference from a practical standpoint. On paper, of course, you see the difference. But what you're doing by approving this site and the VFW site is essentially, it's forward-looking because if you look at approving taller sites, you're basically going to reduce the proliferation of sites because you're going to build sites that other carriers can avail of. Not only would you be approving two sites that would help AT&amp;T address their gap in coverage, you're also approving a solid network of towers whereby other carriers can come along and avail of these structures. And, you know, the objective, of course, which is no different for other carriers as it is for AT&amp;T, is we're basically trying to meet customer demand. That's really what it is. It's not a case of bill that they will come. We're actually behind the ball.
Behind.
So, you know, that's Mingus High School, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this particular site.
I do have a question about why two different entities are applying for the same company.
Mayor, members of the council, Greg Lake, I can answer that question. As a matter of fact, I can answer it well. I do represent AT&amp;T in many of their sites. As a matter of fact, I did negotiate the lease for AT&amp;T with the VFW. AT&amp;T, on several, on many occasions, will have a tower company who will come in and build the infrastructure. So, AT&amp;T has signed that lease over to Capital Telecom and said, "Go build that tower for us once you get it approved, and we want to go on top." Capital Telecom says, "Great, we'd love to do that." And as a matter of fact, we hope that in addition to AT&amp;T, we hope we can get other carriers co-located on that tower with us as well. So that's why you have Capital Telecom here for an AT&amp;T tower, and then AT&amp;T as well on a separate site.
So, you're a little bit like a separate business, the people that go out and build the towers?
Yes, there are many tower companies throughout the United States. There are three primary tower companies, SBA, American Tower, and Crown. But then you have smaller companies who work into niches like Capital Telecom, who address these specific type of situations.
And Madam Mayor and Council, I think Chairman Kyler would probably attest, and staff could too, that these applicants have come a long way in their presentations over time because I think the first time they presented to the commission, the commission was found, the presentation left wanting. It was not, and perhaps other communities have been a little easier to approve applications, but the commission was not satisfied with the quality or quantity of information and sent the applicant back. And the applicant came back, and we had meetings, and we told them what we thought the commission, and ultimately the council, most importantly, would need. And so this is what you see tonight, and I guess I see it longitudinally, at least. Substantively, there's more and better information here as there was for the commission to consider, for the council to consider. Ed, is that fair? They got better?
Mr. Kyler?
Mayor and Council, one of the, I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier, but it also pertains to this application as well. It was voted to recommend five to one, based on the same information I gave you earlier. But the problem that the commission had here with this in our discussions was nobody, neither the gentleman that did information for us or the applicant, could explain why, if a 90-foot tower on the first one covers adequately, like someone thinks they do, why do we need a second 90-foot tower for AT&amp;T? What I'm saying is, nobody explained to us, to our satisfaction, as to why we needed two towers two miles apart to cover the Verde Valley. And that was our dilemma. But again, based on information and advice of council, that's why the five-to-one recommendation for approval.
Mr. Garrison?
I've got a question. Did the commission take into account, if I remember right, and I think it was in one of the pictures, there's already a Verizon tower that's been added to the lights at the stadium or the football field. Did the commission take into account that tower already existing on that property?
That was never brought to our, Mayor and Council, that was never brought to our attention, Mr. Garrison. Their comments were made that it was insufficient height from the football field to cover the area that they wanted to. Originally, we wanted to put some antennas on top of the lighting, if I remember correctly, I'd have to see the minutes, but they weren't high enough to do the job that they wanted done. So that's why they applied for a second 90-foot tower. Both of them are AT&amp;T, by the way.
Right.
It was a difficult decision to come to. We spent three months on this, three separate meetings, it was part of our discussions, before we finally decided on it.
Thank you.
I would just, maybe I'll add to that. I've spent a lot of time down at that field, and I know exactly where that, you know, they are located on an existing light pole. They've been there, I think, for, I want to say, almost a decade, it seems like, as long as I, you know, in recent memory. And those lights, when you look at them, they don't, because of that high point right there, those lights don't reach over the ridge. So if you're to try and put another co-location on a light over there, it's still going to be in a situation where you're not going to get over that high point. Because just to see over the high point, you've got to be on the top of the stadium, on the top of the press box. That's where I usually am when I record football games.
Now, I guess what I was after is, with all this co-mingling of infrastructure, is there any, has there been any talk or any movement on the possibility of removing that Verizon tower off of that football field and adding it to this pine tree, therefore eliminating a tower in that area altogether? That's, I guess, where I was headed with.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Garrison, just to address the Verizon location, as the contours here will show, that it's, like I said, there's about a 60-foot difference in elevation. So, it really doesn't help us out in terms of addressing our gap, which is to the west to get over that ridge, if you like. And so, that's the first thing I would like to say. The other thing is that we can't really speak for Verizon. They have a different technology, they operate different frequencies, they have a different footprint. Their objectives may be totally different than AT&amp;T's objectives as far as addressing gaps in coverage. But typically with ball field light poles, with the restrictions you have with the not to interfere with the lighting, they typically end up in just a one-carrier structure. You typically get one carrier on there.
I was going the other direction.
I'm sorry.
Mr. September?
Yeah, Scott September, AT&amp;T. Mayor, Councilmember Garrison, like Declan said, we can't speak for Verizon, but I will say this. If Verizon approached us and said we're interested in moving our antennas and co-locating, we would welcome them.
Thank you.
And again, you know, there's other carriers in the market, you know, who knows who else is having issues around, in proximity to Mingus High School. You know, the other thing, what noting is, obviously, it's great to see the school district, you know, getting the revenue from this, and I suppose if there's another advantage is that the presence of AT&amp;T there and the improved service, obviously, you know, would be a factor in their emergency plan, et cetera. So, there are a lot of positives to this site, this location, given that our challenge is to address the coverage gap to the west, which is primarily residential, you know, we're basically, our options are very, very limited here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've heard from all the applicants, and council's asked their questions, so now we can, I mean, other, okay, so the council has the ability per code to accept the planning and zonings vote on that, but we can also go ahead and make our own decision. So, would you like to proceed with that? Okay. So, at this time, we'll welcome comments from the public. So this is my next question. Each person has five minutes. We could be here most of the night. Are you willing to go down to three minutes? Would that work? Can everybody, can, so raise your hand if you can do yours in three minutes, and if you prefer three minutes, and five minutes? And most of you don't care one way or the other? So...
I'll probably stay for the VFW. They just wanted us to be able to sheet sand, and we are here for the approval.
Okay, so...
Maybe, Ron, everyone's...
So, is three minutes as good for everybody, for the majority? Okay. So, in that case, we have to vote on that, and I guess we'll need to, well, let's see. We'll have a majority without Terrence?
And Madam Mayor, you need to suspend the rules on a three-quarter vote.
It takes, it takes six of us, or...
Engineers, three-quarters of seven.
Five? I guess five. So we have five here, so we can see if these five, so I would entertain a motion to change the time, the speaking time from five minutes to three minutes, based on the majority of the audience, and so do, I hear a second.
Would that, excuse me, before we go on, would that be the exception of the lady that says she can't finish in the three minutes, or just everybody three?
It's across the board, based on the...
Okay, just to be clear on that, I wasn't sure on that.
Based on the majority of, okay, so the mayor made the motion, and Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think it carries, that's three-quarters of the council's. Okay. All right, so each person will get three minutes, and the city clerk will time it. I would also like to remind everyone about the three Rs: respect for self, respect for others, and responsible for all your actions. And everybody will get a chance to speak. And we have Patricia Romer. Did I pronounce that right, Patricia?
Patrice Romer.
Patrice Romer, okay, Patrice.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. I want to say I protest on the three minutes because this is a huge issue for Cottonwood, mainly for many reasons, but also because, as was spoken, if one carrier comes in, all carriers come in. So, right now, we are a healthy community. Already with the recent installation with the smart meters, I have had reports of issues, especially with the bees and the beekeepers in the area. The bees are agitated, and they're turning violent. So, but also, I was reading the 96 Act, and I didn't see anything in there about health. It did say environment, as was spoken, but health was not, I didn't see it in there. So, there are issues with health. I did send all of you a naval report that was specifically about harmful effects of radiation frequency. I also sent you two EPA reports of harmful radiation. Those speak highly, they are substantial evidence, and they are about the issues of radiation. Now, regarding the proposal, on page three, AT&amp;T proposal, I quote, says, "Non-ionizing electromagnetic emotions are, at low levels associated with this type of wireless technology, are not harmful to living cells." They say there is no substantial evidence to say that there is harm. I would like to see substantial evidence that there isn't harm. Also, on page, also page four, under other informations, item five, I quote, "The subject site will not contribute in measurable ways to the deterioration, to the area contributing, to the lowering of property values." Again, where's the substantial evidence on that? Because I have friends that live around the high school, they have problems with this, they couldn't come tonight. Also, item six, "The communication facility will not result in conditions or circumstances contrary to public health, safety, or welfare." I'd like to address regarding the high school. You've got a cell tower, the children are already under Wi-Fi, and you've got a solar situation all over the parking. Now, in the medical field, and there is a name for electromagnetic sensitivity, electro-sensitivity, that is because electro-sensitivity is an accumulative effect. So, once people are exposed to radiation frequency, it's accumulative. So, we have the smartphones, we have the Wi-Fi, we have the cordless phones, we have the microwaves, we have the wireless signs in the area, we have coming up wireless cars. There's going to be, we have now the smart meters. That one pulses the electromagnetic, which is the problem there. It's the pulsing. So, it's an accumulation. So now, we're going to add cell towers to the Verde Valley, and you're going to add them at a high school? Because I sent you a link recently, there's many communities in the local government area that have refused cell towers based on health, and based, and one just recently in Scottsdale that refused because they wanted to build it an elementary school, and they refused it. Now, also according to the Act of 96, you can refuse on gap, on the gap, what is the term? So sorry, my brain is going a mile a minute. There is, but based on the gap, you can have a gap for the, in that 96 Act, and I think you would know that, that that is how you can say no. And I understand that, you know, we're discussing height of a tower here, but where are we going to be able to discuss whether we want the towers or not? So I'm saying, please postpone this and let us discuss this more, get more information. I've sent you all lots of information, substantial evidence. So, that's my request.
Is that the timer?
Yes.
I think you've gotten almost five minutes now.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Henry?
Frank Henry, Cottonwood. Yes, I'm in favor of the towers, basically. I had two questions as I read through all the material that I was able to obtain online. And one of them was, I don't want our board to be stuck out on the diving board with saying that this board or the zoning board cannot approve/disapprove if they find out that the power coming out is above the safety limit established by the FCC. Most likely, just like you said, and the presenters also said, that the power that will be emitted and actually hit... will be emitted and actually hit receivers and people and you name it, will be well below the safety limit. But, this board, if they do diligence, and do their homework, and sit with the engineers and find out how much power is going to be piped into the antenna, and what the antenna pattern is, and ascertain what the power level will be to the ground, and they see that it's above the FCC level, they can say, "No, get out of here, go adjust your figures again." That's one. The other thing is the pine tree approach. I like the plain old pole, it's an antenna, none of this fancy-dandy stuff of a pine tree, because the pole style is designed for a certain wind resistance. Now, you go and put little sails on this pole, what was, what used to be, and I'm just drawing out an academic number, a pole that could withstand 100 miles with no problems, now you put all these little sails out there, 50 miles of wind can blow it down. That's just a question, look into it, see what the mechanical engineer for the tower companies have to say for that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nester?
Yes, ma'am, council, I'm Tom Nester. I am the chief finance officer for the VFW, and part of the House Committee, which would be like you, where the committee kind of does everything, plus do all the maintenance. And what I'd first like to do is give you a signed petition of 120 signatures of asking for the approval, from our members, in support of Capital Telecom. It will be a financial windfall, I will admit that. It's $1,000 a month initially to the VFW, which will help us help veterans, and that's where our money goes. We give over $28,000 a year in services to the community. We give over $9,000 in cash to veterans, orphans, widows, soldiers. We just paid somebody's rent a month ago. Soldier got here, got out of the Army, didn't have the money. We're involved in the community all over, from the hospital, as volunteers, you name it. And we, we have gone through this for two years with them. Before it even passed House Committee, it went through the same thing you were doing, before we even negotiated a contract. And I'd just again like to say, I would like your support in the approval of our cell tower at 705 East South.
Thank you. Mr. Luce? Did you, okay, Mr. Luce is registering his support, and Beverly Luce is registering her support but doesn't wish to speak. Pamela Van Winkle is registering her support, do you wish to speak?
She stepped down for a minute. Yes.
She's right there. Mr. Finney is expressing his support, do you wish to speak?
Yes.
You wish to speak?
I don't know.
Okay. And Larry Stover is showing his support, do you wish to speak? Okay. And we'll put this petition, we'll give it to the city clerk for the record, and I'll just pass that around. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, so, any more questions or comments from the city council? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I do want to say, I do understand the folks who are opposed to this, and again, I think it's too bad there haven't been any long-range studies, but I do think that our hands are tied in some ways. And that's the reality of it.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski?
Yeah, I don't, I don't like cellphone towers, I don't think anyone in this room likes cellphone towers. I would agree with Pratt, there just aren't enough studies to indicate long-term health effects at all. I've done my research, and, you know, we are, you know, we are against a barrel on this one. But I understand two citizens are requesting this through their use of, you know, the wireless technology. I, I was born just 50 years too late, I think. So, I, I just don't like any of it, and I don't like pine trees that look like, or cellphone towers that look like pine trees, but, but nobody does. But this is the world we live in, unfortunately. I am much more comfortable now with approving a 90-foot tower over several 60-foot towers, and I appreciate everyone's just clear description on what that means. And I, I also am comfortable with the co-location, and I'm more comfortable now that companies will choose to co-locate, and I would hope that we would look in the future at maybe revising our ordinance to strongly encourage co-location. I think that's something positive that we could do to stop the proliferation of several 90-foot towers across Cottonwood. So, I don't like any of this, quite frankly, I just don't like it, but it's the world we live in, and I'm as comfortable as I ever will be to approve the 90-foot tower.
Mr. Howdigee?
Just to comment on your, on your comment on the, not liking those fake trees.
Yeah.
I was out at the property in Camp Verde the other day, and right there, one of the, oh, this area where they park trailers, people come and visit, they have a cell tower there. And when I was leaving, I remember there was a cell tower there, I have to remind myself it was there, because you drive by it, and you can't tell the difference.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I've seen some of the ones they've done in Phoenix where they look like pine trees, and I was kind of shocked when you did the one up at Flagstaff Mall, you should have made it look like a 90-foot Saguaro, because, you know, the ones in Phoenix that look like pine trees are just terrible, and maybe that's my experience, I haven't seen one that actually looks like a pine tree.
You know, well, when you drive by, you look at, I mean, if you're going to inspect it like a botanist, maybe, maybe that's the deal, but, but driving by, all you see is the silhouette.
Yeah.
And, and I'm telling you, I had to remind myself it was there.
Yeah. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, battled it out well, and encouraged the companies to make it look much more realistic, so I think that we'll get something that looks far better than what they've got down.
Yeah, in the future, who knows, maybe there'll be, you know, big apple trees or something up there.
I did, you have seen the one at Sedona Shadows, it's that big, beautiful flag?
No, I haven't.
Actually, when you're going to Sedona, and on your left, that, in that trailer-like park, there's that big, beautiful flag, I think that's a tower. So, my question is, why didn't the VFW get a flag?
Very interesting.
I think we got flagged for it.
Oh, okay, and it's pretty tall, too. And then my other question is, like, airplanes flying into them, are they lit, or what, how does that work?
500 feet away from the airport, something like that's new, that's what it's called.
There are several levels of review that AT&amp;T and Capital Telecom have to meet before they go ahead and build a tower. One of them is compliance and working through FAA.
Mm-hmm.
So, if FAA imposes requirements, yes, we have to comply with FAA requirements.
There, Madam Mayor, there's an approach zone that goes from high, far away, to low at the airport, and that's, that's inviolable.
Okay, so it's, that's all okay?
I'm interested in your answer. I checked glide slope on the VFW site.
If you would come up to the microphone, so the people in TV land can hear what you're saying.
One of the things I checked was the glide slope distance to the airport from that VFW site, and at 90 feet, there is absolutely no problem, no lighting is required, no strobe lights, anything like that are required. I did not check the Mingus High School site, however.
Okay, thank you. So, at this point, I think we've discussed it in thorough detail, and so I would entertain a motion from anybody that wants to, Mr. Pratt?
Can I make a motion on both of them?
I...
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to accept the recommendation of the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, and approve the request from Cold Creek Consulting LLC and Capital Telecom to exceed the city's presumptive 60-foot height limitation on cellular wireless communication towers by up to 30 feet, for a tower to be located at the VFW hall, and for one to be located Mingus, Mingus High School campus pursuant to Section 404.h.h.8.b of the city's zoning ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we got everything in we needed for both?
Yeah, I was written by a lawyer.
Okay. And so, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Howdigee?
I think he...
Mr. Ilinski seconded it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I just have to say, nobody can leave. You have to sit here and listen to the water and sewer ordinance. Just kidding. Just, they lock the doors, no, just kidding.
Madam Mayor, you should have made that a stipulation of your approval.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's illegal, mayor, that'd be considered cruel, unusual punishment.
Cruel and unusual punishment, yes, I agree. Okay, so we'll kind of let the crowd thin out before we move on, so we can hear.
I think if you had announced they were going to miss the chance to hear Dan Luder, they might have bailed out even quicker.
I did go for a little bit of a light, right?
They may be, need to be reminded that we have a meeting to continue.
Trying to get back into a little bit more all the time, you know, just pick up the miles.
So, if all the gentlemen who would like to visit might continue their visits outdoors, so we can go on with our meeting? All right, item number three, Underneath Business? Is Ordinance Number 605, Amending the Cottonwood City Code by Repealing the 1990 Sewer Policy of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, as amended by repealing Chapter 1312 of the Cottonwood City Code, and by adopting Title 14 of the Cottonwood City Code entitled "City Utilities." Mr. Luder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The document we present to you tonight has been in the works for several years. City attorney's suggestion, we brought Ellen Van Riper, who's in the audience with us, and I think many of you are familiar with her, to help kind of take everything step at, and put it into something that was legible and legal. So, what we present you tonight is a combined ordinance, and one of the important reasons to get this moved through is, we're at a standstill on combining of sewer and water bills because of some state legislation that required us to adopt specific ordinances so we could combine some of these bills. So, this one's kind of all-encompassing, if anyone had a chance to read through the whole thing, I commend you. I would like to thank Councilmember Garrison, being a former water system owner, he had some insight into this. As you can imagine, after reading this 15 or 20 times, the words blur together. Picked up a few things for it, so what we present you tonight, still has a couple typos, I picked up one or two in the back room, but the content is, is what we have for council tonight, and this will allow us to move forward. It will negate the former sewer policy, and we will have a unified ordinance for both water and sewer.
If I might, if they are merely typographical or scribbler errors, they can be corrected between the first and second readings before filing.
I was happy to, it wasn't nearly as long as I thought it would be, so...
When you told me 300 pages, I had to go back and...
Well, I didn't, I meant the whole packet, not just your ordinance, but I didn't know at the time how much of the ordnance, it wasn't as long as I thought, so...
And it's been cut down substantially. But, as I said, Ms. Van Riper's here tonight, if you have any questions, or if you have any technical questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them, and this would be the first reading.
Okay, so, any questions about Ordinance 605? Mr. Ilinski, and then Mr. Delling?
I'm sorry, do you want to go ahead?
No.
You don't have any?
I was just wringing my hands.
Okay. I had just a question, I did read it, okay, just, just so you know, and I enjoyed it thoroughly. It is very thorough.
You did, you were reading it so you could go to sleep, right?
Yes, I read it to my daughter, and she felt right. So, I wanted to know how this will pertain to renters, when they go in to sign up for service, okay, let me try to be more clear. The, if, if there's an unpaid bill on a property, and then that property is then rented out, who, you know, when, when the, when the new renter goes in to sign up for service, they, they don't have to pay that outstanding bill, right?
I would be happy to answer that, but I'm feeling the gaze from city council, and I think that would be a good one through council to answer.
Okay. Because it was just a little, it, it probably would have been clearer if I'd read it through a couple, few more times, but I just didn't, I thought I'd just ask you.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council, again, my name is Ellen Van Riper, I'm an attorney in Phoenix, and I want to thank your city attorney for engaging me to help the city with this project. Really enjoyed working with Dan, and Roger, and Tony, really good team you have here. Okay, now, as far as the question goes, we recently had a state statute adopted in Arizona, which changed what had been a pretty consistent practice of all cities and towns in regard to responsibility for paying for utility services, particularly water. In the past, all the cities, you know, would have it attached to the property, and the property owner would be responsible for paying it, even if a renter skips town and didn't pay the bill. That was something which, you know, was done regularly, and apparently, the legislature thought that that was unfair to property, to property owners, and so, you can't do that anymore. You cannot, you know, have, you know, the property owner, landlord, responsible to pay an unpaid bill by the renter. So, what happens was, now, we have in this ordinance is, the customer is the renter, and the renter, when they sign up for the contract, is going to have to bring either some kind of written authorization from their landlord about, yeah, their tenant, or, better yet, the copy of the lease agreement. And when you have that, then, you know, they're, they're the tenant. And if they do leave without paying the bill, you know, the city's only recourse is going to be whatever deposit has been made.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know, it's built into this code, you know, and the city, you know, the city had had it before, I believe, is, if there's been, you know, continued service with prompt payment for the 12 months or so, then you start getting some rebate back on those deposits. So, you know, it's going to be some cases where you're probably going to, you know, you could lose some money on a renter, but the deposit, you know, is hopefully going to cover the month or the, the two months that, that the payments weren't made.
Okay.
You have any other questions?
No, that answers my question, I just, I was kind of concerned about the mechanics of how that's realistically going to work, because I think, we have, we have a high percentage of rental properties in Cottonwood, so...
50% or something?
Yeah, like 50% of the properties here are rentals, so, I'm just concerned that, you know, with the, with the slum lords that we have, if, if there would even be a lease agreement that the tenant could bring to the city to get signed up for service, and then, what, what happens if the slum lord doesn't pay their bill, and the water shut off on the, this isn't, this isn't a question for you, obviously, it's just something that I think we should have to, we should consider, you know, how that's, you know, mechanically actually going to play out.
Well, I think, you know, it is, you know, a hypothetical, but there's going to have to be somebody who signs the contract.
Yeah.
And, you know, if the property owner decides, "Yeah, I'll take care of it, I'll be responsible," terrific. You know, some property owners might do that just to save that headache.
Yeah.
And then bill their tenant for whatever that charge is, and that's one way property owners can go about it.
Yeah.
Or, you know, so, you're going to have a contract with somebody, you're not going to provide the service without the contract being in place, whether it be the property owner, the tenant, who approves their tenant.
Certainly, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's clear, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I just did have a question about 1401.040, and it's called Utility Department Manager Authority, and it gives the utility department administrative manager all kinds of authority, but it doesn't really mention the city manager, is that a concern? Did you guys talk about that, or...
No, and it wouldn't be a concern, because in code and by practice, he reports to the city manager.
So, you're still covered as far as authorities, and, okay.
And actually, no offense to the city manager, he's a wonderful person, but...
He doesn't know a whole lot about water?
No, he, he has no standing with ADQ whatsoever.
Correct.
And that's why we vested the authority for most of this in the managers, because they're the certified operators, and those are the ones that are both civilly and criminally liable for this. But because the city manager is so outgoing, we run everything past him. But statutorily, when you go through Title 18, and a little bit, I think, in Title 48, it does vest all the criminal and civil liability with the responsible operator. And if I could step back to Councilmember Ilinski's question, as to the leases, we've been unofficially requiring this for quite a while, and really haven't had a problem with it. it. What we're saying is if you don't have a legal document that says you have the right to have service there, we're not going to turn the water on for you.
Yeah.
What this does is it codifies that practice. The same way when somebody says, I just purchased this house, I want to have it in my name, we make them bring some proof that they own the house, and we also get a driver's license from everybody that, and that goes in the file.
I just see this kind of changing the way we do business someone in Cottonwood, and that we're going to have combined billing, and then if that combined bill is late or unpaid, then we can shut off the water service. So, that's going to be different than how we've done things in the past, and I, on the one hand, I, well, I actually like it a lot, because I think, you know, I mean, I'm trying to figure out ways where we can clean up some of our rental properties, and I hope that we'll somehow be able to keep track of which properties are rental properties, and I think this is going to give us a better, a better grip on that.
In fact, after talking with the city manager yesterday, we're going through right now and trying to identify through our billing program exactly how many rentals we have.
Yeah, because I believe most slum lords keep all the utilities in their name.
Most of them, most of them want, most of them want the renter paying the water, because they don't, if the renter takes off, then it's not coming back on the landlord, because the city attorney a few years back helped us draft a service agreement that's actually a binding contract. And that's why we want to make sure the person that's signing that, we want identification, government ID that shows the person signing that is living there, they have a right to be in that residence. So, slow but sure, we're kind of making things more consistent, and actually hopefully easier on the renters.
And some of this is going to be, I'm sorry, a question of diligence by the city with respect to responsible parties and not letting these things, and hopefully our new billing system will flag things at a certain, hey, time of delinquency, and we can take action before the loss becomes too great. It's one thing to lose a month or two of utility service, it's another to lose a year.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, that's interesting. I've recently become a renter from being an owner, and I did have to fill out a legal document to get the water in my name, but the landlord had to fill out the document to get the sewer in my name, and she's never done it. So, my sewer bill comes to her or current resident of where I live. And I just found that kind of odd, that I had to actually get the document to get it, you know, notarized, to get the water turned on. She had to get the document and get it notarized for me, for my name to be on the sewer.
And this ordinance will clean up a lot of that. A lot of it had to do with the change in, in the statutes.
And I just don't pay it, and I figure you'll go after her eventually, but...
We know where to find you.
Madam, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to add to Councilman Ilinski's concern is, one of the council's strategic goals is to try and tighten up the rental code, so we will be bringing some options to the council to, with that idea in mind, trying to make sure that the homes that are being rented, or the apartments being rented, are actually safe to be rented.
Right, and I saw that in there, too, where if it's determined by the manager that it's unsafe home, they're not going to provide water service, or if there's a substantial leak in the plumbing system somewhere, they're not going to turn it on just to let it...
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's good.
Okay, so, Mr. Garrison?
Couple of things I wanted to speak of. One is, the current system is extremely problematic for property owners that are landlords, whether they're slum lords or not. It causes that party to be responsible for something that they have no responsibility over, and it ties into the property taxes. It now becomes a, it can become a binding lien against the property, irregardless of the landlord's responsibility in that matter. And I can tell you, as somebody has had to deal with this, it's been, it's been really a pain in the butt. So, I think this is going to get this cleaned up quite a bit and make things and make life a lot easier. Also, one of the things that happens is, irregardless of how many services there are within the water department's control, the staff working the counter recognizes patterns pretty quickly. Certain properties become very well-known for use and use patterns, and this mode, this ordinance is going to allow them to be creative and be a little more precise in how they deal with properties and setting those fees and those deposits. And another thing that happens is, sometimes, I think what you're alluding to is you have a renter who will move from place to place to place to try to get away from their burden or their bills, and this ordinance won't allow that either, because they can pick up and move from here, but the minute they come back in and apply for service, that debt is going to follow them. Right. And not only just follow them in the city, it's going to follow them everywhere. So, it really puts the, puts the responsibility back where it belongs, which is with the tenant, the person using the facilities, and it takes it off the landlords, which I think is going to make things easier for us to also enforce rental codes, because now you'll be able to get away from those manipulations of the rules. Yeah, no, and I agree, I think it does clean it up a lot. I just want to make sure that if there is a problem with property, you know, or a problem property owner, that the tenant that comes in isn't held responsible for the property owner's bad business practice, essentially, and I think that with this ordinance, they essentially won't be, because the burden falls directly on the, on the tenant, the user of the service.
And one of the other things this really cleans up, and this has been a frustration of mine, and Mr. Rodriguez's, is on the sewer side, people know it's very difficult to discontinue sewer service. We, in the old sewer policy, we could dig it up and plug the sewer off, and it costs them $100 to get their service back on, costs probably $400, $500 to dig it up, plug it, and then re-dig it up and take it out. So, basically, what this will do, and the conversion will do, is we'll be able to start from scratch and combine these bills. We're actively going after people that have outstanding sewer bills. We do have the ability to lien if they're high enough, but what this will do is this will give them a mechanism for them, right now, people can pay their water bill and not pay their sewer bill, and until it gets high enough to make it worthwhile to lien it or do something, they can get away with that. This will end that, so it will make them a lot more responsible.
Any more questions by councilmembers?
Looks good.
Any comments by members of the public? If not, there is no motion, because it's the first reading, and I would ask the city clerk to read ordinance number 605 by title only.
Ordinance number 605, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Cottonwood City Code by repealing the 1990 sewer policy of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, as amended by repealing Chapter 13.12 of the Cottonwood City Code and by adopting Title 14 of the Cottonwood City Code entitled "City Utilities." Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item is reduced fares for seniors, reduced public transportation fares for senior citizens age 60 and over, and for students with a valid student ID card effective July 1st, 2014. And we have Mr. Rodriguez to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is something that we've been kind of tossing around for some time. When we were talking to our transit manager, Bruce Morrow, about this, he's trying to increase ridership as well as to help out as many people in the public. And currently, we already have funding through NACOG's Community Services Block Grant and Social Services to assist low-income people. A lot of those people are already over 60 years old, and what we're trying to do is, if we can give 60-year-olds plus a break on the, on the fees, we're hoping that they'll continue and encourage more people to go on their buses. But at the same time, that money that's being used for those 60-plus, we can shift it over and help other people that are low-income and are below the 60 years of age. Along with that is, we've been approached also by Yavapai College and the schools, on and off, in a informal way, to see if we can help them out, pick up some of these kids that cannot catch a bus or don't have the financial resources to have a vehicle or rides to either college or to school. So, we're trying to kind of ease the burden on them. So, this is why we decided internally, talking about it, trying to get, you know, kind of bounce things back and forth, and this idea came across. Initially, I think we're probably going to have a little bit of a dip in our fees, because we will be shifting people around, but there's two things that are going to get accomplished on here. One of them is we do believe that our fees will go up in the long term, and secondly is it'll increase our ridership. And when we go to ADOT to talk about grants and such and funding, ridership, if it becomes stagnant, they kind of look at it as, well, we've kind of topped out and so forth. What we're trying to do is trying to push that ridership, as ridership increases, it actually provides some solid support that we need to continue that funding and possibly increase the funding into the future. And that's going to be crucial now that we've been talking with the Yavapai Nation, with their busing system coming online in the next few weeks, and we've been talking about maybe setting up a circular that will not only encompass just Sedona and the Yavapai Nation here, but also put that third leg together that'll go all the way from Maguire ville and so forth, all the way up in that way. So, we'll be asking for, not necessarily for our purposes, but any time you have increased ridership, it really supports the program and the grant availability. So, all we're trying to do is shift some money back over to help even more people, those especially low incomes, and secondly is increase our ridership for future grant opportunities.
Mr. Pratt?
I'm happy to note that I knew we couldn't get through one meeting without having at least one no-brainer. This is just another service we'll provide to the community. It builds goodwill, it'll increase ridership. I think you explained it all well, and again, I think this is an obvious one.
I always think that, I mean, 60 sounds so young, doesn't it?
Yep.
Yes, for me.
Any other comments?
Thoughts? I guess I would, have we, Bruce being in the industry as long as he had been, have there been any other models that we could look to that would predictively represent what we're trying to do, that would sort of say that this has worked in other places?
Oh, this is exactly what he's looking at.
That's what we're, okay.
This is what, one of the ideas, there's a distinct advantage by having Bruce on board, is that he's worked for very large systems, and he's seen these kind of ideas, but he doesn't want to introduce everything. He's always conscious that we are small and we're trying to increase. So, we've got some other plans, and we have been meeting with the Verde Valley Transit Organization here, of which we're a member, and as a matter of fact, we're kind of the leader in that particular group. And what we're trying to do is basically bring everyone together into Verde Valley and try to set up a system that'll eventually, of course, this is out on the future a bit, that'll be hopefully an independent system supported by all the different communities in the area. But we don't want to grow it so fast that it puts a burden on Cottonwood, but unfortunately, Cottonwood happens to be the biggest sponsor of the program financially.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion.
There's anybody from the public? Mr. Pratt?
I move to authorize staff to provide half price passes and fares for citizens 60 and older and for students with a valid student ID effective July 1st, 2014.
Second.
That was quick.
That was.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Thanks for being the last guy on the list here tonight.
No problem.
Stay, you get the, you get the certificate for staying the longest, right? Claims and, claims on...
I move we pay the claims and just...
Second.
Claims and adjustments. Okay, so...
We swamped you.
You did, you swamped me. So, Mr. Ilinski, is that your name, made the motion? And Mr. Garrison, did you second it?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?